Thank you. Thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this meeting will now be called to order. Let's see, first we have a public hearing. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 17, 2017, 6:00 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse in Jonesville, Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on a proposed ordinance to establish a regional industrial facility authority in cooperation with the counties of Dixon, Scott, Wise, and City of Norton.
I didn't know if you wanted to open the floor. I didn't give you a general. This is an effort on a regional basis. It's not adding another layer or another competing agency as far as trying to do economic development, but giving the localities of this area some different options in forming a regional authority. And actually, we're partnering with at least one county that's typically not affiliated with the Lenoir-Wisco district, and that's Dickinson County. But it felt like that we are, the three counties, excuse me, four counties in City of Norton are all very similar, and we're close enough geographically that we could partner together on various projects. You're not tied to have to partner in any given project, but you get to pick and choose which projects you want to participate in if you want to partner with another locality to do so. This ordinance would just create the authority, which would be named the Lonesome Pine Regional Industrial Facility Authority. The counties of Lee, Scott, Wise, Dickinson, and the City of Norton would be participating members of this. There would be two members of the authority appointed from each locality that participates, which would give him a 10-member board. Also included, a copy of the draft. These have not been adopted yet because the authority has not technically been formed. But I've submitted a copy of the draft bylaws of the agency. And you'll read in there that they do have the authority to hire staff, as any authority does, but there's no initial plans to hire staff because they don't have funding and they're not ready to start asking localities for large quantities of funds to try and operate another organization. So this is just another tool to try to help provide economic development in the region. We will need to open the floor for any public comments.
Yes. Floor is open for public comment. Any comment from the board members? I don't see any negatives to this. I think it's something we could participate in. Have the opportunity to participate.
I agree. I think it's been kicked around basically ever since we all been elected. Most people's discussed it. We'll definitely increase our chances on trying to collaborate together and get bigger organizations and stuff like this area, so. Plus, the being able to pick and choose, there's really no negative to it, so. I would have to say I support it.
We don't have to take any action on this, do we? I mean, we have already, we have already.
Well, made a general commitment, but to adopt the ordinance, it takes a formal vote.
Okay. Okay. All right then, we don't have any public comment. We'll hope for.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt this.
Ordinance.
To accept the authority.
Okay, we got a motion to accept.
Second.
And we got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have departmental reports.
Those are included in your agenda package.
Right. I guess everybody's had a chance to look over those. Any discussion on those? Is there a new building inspector on the job now?
He is. He's been on the job for two days now. He'll be going to the Core Academy, which is one of the requirements that the state has. He'll be attending that next week. So Mr. Bonin will, is going to work with him this week, and will also be here next week. And after that, he'll probably be on his own. I think he'll make a doubt pretty quickly.
Okay. Any more discussion on departmental reports? We'll move on next to the treasures report. Any comments on treasures report? Okay, next I guess we'll move on to public expression. Open the floor for public expression. And I would ask that everybody don't come at once. Okay, if there's no public expression, we'll move on to the approval of amendments. First would be September 19, 2017, regular meeting. And the September 27, 2017 recess meeting. Got a motion to accept.
Second.
All right, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move right along to payroll. One of the county administrators reports that payroll warrants have been issued. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, did on this lane group.
This is not on the bills. That's just saying that payroll warrants have been issued. Paychecks have been laid out for payroll.
Okay. That was one thing that I was looking at that popped out my whip and threw it. I wish we get to the delegations of.
All right then, we'll move right along to delegations. First we'll have Sunset Digital.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Certainly appreciate you all giving me a few minutes tonight, and thanks to Mr. Poe, his office, for their kindness in assisting me up to this point. My name's Joseph Puckett, and I represent Sunset Digital Communications. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Schlempp, I've had the pleasure of working with you all in the VCC through Sunset's transaction to purchase the BBU Optimate System. Tonight, I'm here specifically to introduce myself and give you all kind of a heads up about one particular item, and that's the cable TV franchise agreement process. I spoke with Mr. Poe, and he's been kind enough to assist me with gathering some information as we've done from Lee County to Bland, which will be our new footprint for cable TV. A little background in that, BBU wasn't allowed to offer cable TV services outside their power grid footprint, based on their stature as a public entity. Upon the closing of the transaction, Sunset plans to begin expansion into all those localities from Lee to Bland, and in that process, we want to get cable TV franchise agreements in place in each locality that requires those. As you all know, as Mr. Muncy sure knows, there's not a lot of moving parts to those agreements anymore with the changes to the state code, which are a couple of things term in particular that are negotiable. We're in the process, our attorney is in the process of developing a template, and we're going to present the same thing to everybody. Of course, there are obviously, you all have the opportunity to negotiate items as are available for the code, and we look forward to doing that with you. If I want to introduce myself, let you know that'll be coming. I'll get that to Mr. Poe from distribution and review when I was Muncy, and review guys at the board, and obviously there'll be a public hearing, and as you all dealt with, I'm sure before, I think Comcast is the major provider that Mr. Poe shared with me there. But I wanted to just let you know that that's coming. Introduce myself. I'll be working full-time for Sunset post-closing. I live, I was born and raised in Russell County. I live there now, and I have any plans on leaving, so. I've got cards, I'd be glad to leave everybody one, and if you have any issues moving forward, certainly I'd be glad to help any way I can.
Certainly appreciate you coming by and talking with us. I'm sure there'll be some folks glad to hear, but you know, there might be some competition.
Yes, sir. When I live in Town 11, and I live 200 feet from the BBU cable, I can't get any service from them the whole time, so I'm anxious as well. We feel like the air presence in the market will not only be beneficial to the folks that were fortunate enough to sign up, but we think that everybody else will raise their game up a little bit, too.
So is expansion also high on the priority list for where they cut off? Because there's several, several people you talk to, and you know it comes to a point, and that's been years and years ago, and you know, a lot of people would like to have it, and I was just wondering if that's one of the big priorities.
Yes, sir. I think you'll see, and it's just my opinion, you know, looking at our existing operation, Lee County will probably see a more immediate benefit than anybody else, because Sunset's sort of poised to, they're right at the doorstep here. It's just a bit a matter of resources up to this point. You know, I don't, these aren't exact numbers, but the current capacity is, they maybe have 100 signups a month, and they can only hook up 60 or 65, so backlogs really quickly. And you see, you know, posts on Facebook, you know, just like that, I see a dozen or 15, 20 comments, and there are a lot of them are Lee County-based because of it, because it is available in the county, but not in places that have the most need. So expansion is the number-one priority. Infusion of private capital that's allowed us to purchase BBU is going to allow us to expand our crews significantly. We've made commitments to the Cumberland Plateau because they were owner of some of the BBU assets, or co-owners of BBU assets. We've got to protect in variety contractually, so beyond the fact that it's good business for us to hook up more people, we've obligated ourselves to do that, do that contract. So some of the first targets will be in Lee County, just because of where we already are.
So once that begins, will there be a number or something available where people can, you know, try to sign up for it?
Yeah, and you can already do it on the website. I'll give you my card, and just, for example, I did it myself when I first heard about it. I just went there and signed up. Immediately, five or 10 minutes later, I get an email, "Thanks for signing up." And that does, it helps us build a database of customers that say, "I want your service." Of course, there's other, just like you do with any service, there's creditworthiness and things like that you have to go through, and it helps us identify where folks are that want the service, and gives us the ability to pre-engineer certain areas based on need. So I'll give you that card, on the website, on the card. Folks can go, they sign up, put your address in, and it tells you whether our service is available there now or what it'll be in expansion areas. Obviously, there's a lot of expansion areas in the footprint itself, because there's several counties that, well, Lee County is one of the few that were already there. Most counties in the BBU footprint, we're not there yet, mainly Cumberland Plateau and the Mount Rogers Courtroom.
I'm from the western end of the county, and down there, you got people that call me and tell me they've been signed up for three years, and naturally, they wonder, "Are we going to ever get it?" Well, what is the answer to that? I mean, these people, they've already been signed up for X number of times. Are they in the future going to eventually get hooked up?
Mr. Schlempp, I don't want to speak to any specific persons. I don't know any individual person's situation, but folks that are on the current list will have priority over folks that, myself as an example, I just signed up back in March, February, March, and somebody's been on the list from Lee County will be ahead of me in that case. And I see that, that's some of the comments you see on social media, is the folks that list how long they've been on the list, been waiting a year, been waiting 21 months, and some folks got down to the day, and that's just a function of resources. But I can tell you that we'll be committed to expanding that and infusion of capital from the partner that we have that's allowing us to make this purchase, allows us to expand the construction crew significantly in order to speed up our hook-up rate and get that above our sales rate.
And you know, I was thinking, I guess, I mean, I don't know, but they said they'll be on this side of the road, these people will get it, the folks across the road, they can't get it, and I mean, I don't know what the answer to that is. I mean, I don't know why, I mean, why they don't go across, you know?
That's hard to say. Specifically, I, you know, I work right, in my previous life, I worked in the gas business, and we did work for our local distribution company. We had a lot of that, homes of what we called a long service, when you had to board, you know, board the road or haul off, is what we used. And I don't know what the, you know, the company's perspective on that was, but the contractor, you know, obviously just followed that direction. So I don't know why specifically that is, but I'll try and find out for you. Please mind.
Don't hold me to this, but I can't quote a source because I can't remember, and it's, I won't say it's solid factual, but it's a rumor, at least I heard. And I know part of the problem, the problem down there on the delay in hookups has been they did not have the capability. They didn't have, they didn't have the bandwidth to push any more service, basically. They didn't have the fiber. It's my understanding that that is either, some of that has been addressed or is being addressed, to where they will be able to take additional customers in that area. And the Jonesville area, they can still take customers because they've got capacity. Down there, they were just out of capacity. A question that I've got, I'm assuming this will work off of the fiber, so cable service will only be available where internet service is available. Is that correct? Okay.
Everything runs off the fiber.
Right. It runs off the same.
It's a cable TV invoice. I don't have a home phone, not many folks do anymore, but.
Before we move forward, would be wonderful. What's the projected percentage that you're all going to try to hook up to, say, on people that wants it? Is there going to be, is there going to be several hurdles that can't be met as far as distance you're having to run the cable, a certain number has to sign up to go through the cable? Because see, some of them things, if you could just be honest with people and say, "Look, you're probably never going to get it."
Technically, that's addressed in the franchise agreement.
Yeah, you know, you get along with that a little better than people think they's going to come, and keep getting their hopes up.
Well, we, you know, Mr. Schlempp saw some of this in the VCC negotiations. They're much more prevalent in the Cumberland Plateau negotiations. That was a huge concern, that, you know, the board members had that we'll just come in like all cable companies do, and we'll hit the towns and not worry about rural areas. And that's not, we're built for rural broadband, you know, we've identified, there's federal and state monies that are available to extend what we want, you all well and know well as last mile. So we're not just going to focus on that, that the BBU purchase puts, you hear a lot of folks talk about how that system costs $160 million to put in, and you're getting it for 50, and I don't know if those numbers are, I don't know what it costs to put in, but I know private carriers weren't begging to put it in, and so it tells me it needed to be subsidized on some level, and it was. That's why it exists. We're committed to rural broadband, much in the way that, I served on the Russell County Board for six years, on the Water Board for four. Take rate was always a big issue, and rural take rates are far and above higher than urban, suburban, even what I would call a town. I live in Lebanon. Take rate in the rural areas of Russell County is much higher than the take rate in the Town 11, because there are no options. So when the service is offered, the take rate is well over 70%. I can't give you a percentage of how many folks want to hook up. I know we've committed to over 30,000 new connections in the next five years. That's only in the Cumberland Plateau region. That's a place where we don't have anything but the backbone that we're going to buy. So, and Mr. Poe's right, some of it is about this sheer volume of fibers, and that, again, takes capital, which now we're going to have access to.
I'm just curious, because a lot of places I know, it's come out the little rural roads, you know, and it made so-and-so's house, and then stopped, and you go down another road, and it went to another house and stopped, and I was just, and I know you can't answer our questions right now, but, you know, I'd like just people, because, you know, once it starts going, they're going to be calling several of us, you know, because the whole time I've been on this board, you get calls thinking that we just call you all and y'all go hook it up, you know, or something. I don't have it myself, so that's why I was kind of pondering on, plus I can answer and, you know, a personal question.
Well, I can take this, move forward. If there's a place that needs it, and we can't, that needs more than just a sign up on internet, call me, and we'll go look at it together, and at least give.
I can take you there.
And at least, what's that?
I can take you there to my house.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
They ran it, let me tell you.
Yes, sir.
They ran that cable 400 yards past my house. I can stand my yard and spit, hit the pole that the thing's hooked up to. I gave them another deposit that day, and that's been six months ago, and I've had another deposit over there with them for five years, and I've still, I've got it hooked up.
Where is that, Mr. Schlempp?
It's up on Conley's Road, Conley Drive, I'm sorry. And I've talked to Mr. Elsman personally about it. My wife's been over there. I mean, I don't know what else you do. Why won't they hook me up?
I'll find out. They may not tell me either, but. I hope I can help you. I don't know the backstory there, but I hope we can write a better one. But that's what I can offer to you, is I'll give you my personal time and effort to it.
Well, I can assure you, Mr. Schlempp and I, you know, we, I think, and I guess you will also agree that we keep players in that, so.
Yes, sir.
You can be rest assured that we're expecting Lee County to get some dividends off of.
Yeah, I will say that, your chairman and Mr. Schlempp were both staunch allies of this deal moving forward, and that wasn't the case for everybody in their own, in some of those VCC meetings, and it was a long, hard battle, and then they got a really, did a really good job representing VCC. And that's a, as you all know, that's a little bit different animal, and it has different interests, and sometimes that's difficult, where you're wearing multiple hats, and you've got to make sure you cover, represent everybody.
Well, we saw it as an opportunity to, you know, for people that are in badly of need of broadband, that this may be their chance, and that's what we're looking for. Just to be, just to note that, we're looking for.
Yes, sir. I think that's the most important piece of infrastructure in my lifetime, and could, you know, definitely change our area for the next century. Thank you all.
Certainly appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, carry on, move right on to approval of this person. Okay, we got a motion to pay the bills. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion?
That one question that I had.
Okay, the lane bill?
Yeah.
That was for the work they did in evaluating the old extension office building down here, preparing a cost estimate for the possible demolition of a portion of it and new construction and renovation. That was their fee for that work. And those are the numbers that I reported at last month's meeting.
One question I got, chairman.
No other comment? Aye, all in favor of paying the bill?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we go to old business, alarm system for the transfer station property.
There was no action taken on that. There was, you didn't, I mean, I don't recall the exact conversation, but pretty much, we want to think about it for a month, and then we'll may discuss it, so we just put it back on the agenda to see if you want to take any further action at this time.
Any discussion on that? Board members.
Well, we got Gary back there. I think that'd be good to get.
Yeah, do it.
Thought so. You'll get your opinion, Gary. Since you just sat and show up just to come by.
I think you came for a reason. Please your case.
Well, we talked after the thefts at the transfer station, garage, and all the other properties over there. Felt like it might be something that was good for the long run. The bus shop out there, they had a security system at the bus shop, and that's the only building out of the whole area that didn't get hit. The maintenance shop, it didn't have, it didn't have a security system, it got hit. Their storage building, it didn't have one, so it got hit, plus all the other buildings in the county and PSA, so. And both the, both the companies that threw in bids, they both gave multiple, they had the opportunity to put more than one person on a call, plus the sheriff's office, so I know, you know, Alan Fortner, he could be a contact for Dog Pound. I could contact, I mean, I'm only like four minutes away or something, you know, from the house, but anyway, if something did happen, at least we would have a chance to stop from getting, you know, everything that we had taken. The cameras we have, I mean, they work, but for what happened over there, if somebody was in a mask, or, I mean, they didn't, they didn't stop it, you know? So it's just something, you know, there's a lot of tools. We purchased over time and stuff, and we replaced them now, and it'd be kind of rough to have them taken again if it, most of the places have been hit twice. Maintenance shop got hit again, what, three weeks ago, something like that? And it got hit again, so all the soils and stuff that they had just purchased, they took them again, so. But they didn't come on out to our place. I don't know if it's because of the video cameras from before, I don't know, but.
So what all would this cover? Any mention of several infrastructures? Would that include basically all of them?
I've got the list, if you want me to read them.
Okay.
It's in the memo. It covers the transfer station itself, the equipment shed, the scale house, the central garage, and the pound. Be five structures there.
I will say that, like the garage, we have the lower bay and the upper bay. For those, that would be under motion, and there would be two different entrance alarms plus motion inside the building, so, you know, if it come in the back or whatever, it'd pick up off motion either way it goes. And all those buildings were connected through phone, except for the one equipment shed that we.
phone, except for the one equipment shed that we had multiple tools and stuff in. And it would be under a cell call. Even though it didn't have a landline, it would actually have a, some kind of cell box or something. It would, it would still make the context just as if, you know, anything else. But, I mean, what, I think what we figured that the installation costs would, would pay, it, it would have paid for everything that we lost and then some, or something like that. I'm not really sure exactly. I can't remember the number. But, I mean, we may never, ever get hit again. I don't, I don't know. But.
Where is Flainer's security systems located?
They're actually out of John City, but they've got, and they've got stuff in Knoxville. It's actually a pretty, pretty good sized company. But I just, I was in Bristol the other day, and I noticed a bunch of the restaurants, a bunch of the big stores and stuff, they use them. I mean, it's, it's not just, I mean, it's a pretty good sized company, I believe. They handle several big stores and stuff. They were, I will say they were real nice and thorough about looking over everything. I mean, they, each one, I think, would be.
Did ADT came out looking?
They, they did too, yes. I called one other company and they never even contacted me back. So. And over time, we, you know, we purchased quite, quite a few things to work, you know, build with. And we've got a lot of stuff that we can do, multiple things through the county and. I thought everything would be real safe under cameras, but.
Well, I know what the quality of ADT is. And first of all, experience. So, I would lean towards ADT. I personally haven't, didn't have very experience with it.
You didn't?
Initial cost with ADT is cheaper, but by the time you reach the three-year monitoring point, Flener begins to be cheaper, just slightly at three years. And then at five years, it's about fourteen hundred dollars cheaper.
Did you ask them, Flener, when you talked to them about why their initial equipment cost us so much?
No. Actually, what I did, I, I come up with the, kind of the footprint of what I thought that we might need. And I presented that to both the companies that came. And I said, if you've got any other ideas or anything that you feel like that might need to be done differently, then I'll take any suggestions, you know, and, which I really didn't get anything different from either one of them. And I thought if I did, I'd have to present that to the other one or something, you know. But both, both of them are actually about the same. I mean, they, they both felt like what I, what I had laid out was sufficient enough to, to take care of what we needed. Like I said, both of them did multiple contacts. So, plus the sheriff, you know, office call, which it dialed that, plus what, it actually dialed the individuals first, and if it can't get through, then it dialed sheriff's office in case somebody had accidentally tripped the alarm that, you know, working or whatever. But it was called in either one. So, but I, I mean, I did with, I go over there even on the weekend and stuff. But, I mean, you never know when something like this happens.
Any more questions from board members? Discussion? Don't want to take any action. You want to put it off? What's, what's everybody got on?
I would have a problem doing it. I just wish I knew a little bit more about the Flener's security systems. Because I'm like Charles, the ADT, you know, I'm a little more familiar with.
What type of problems did you have with ADT? Well, the, well, my, first of all, you know, I was passed, especially for, you know, the first month, I think they give you like a thirty day period where they expect you to make mistakes on you, you know, on the keypad or something like that. But two, three years down the road, I, you know, occasionally, you know, maybe one of the kids come in or something like that and make a mistake on the keypad or something. You know, nobody was ever notified. Plus, their bill kept getting higher, you know, for old equipment. So.
Do you want us to gather some reference, references on customers?
That'd be a good idea.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, I'd just be kind of curious to why their, their equipment was, you know, so much. I, I, it's different. I want to see some references on both, both the companies, but you know. Yeah, I would. But I do agree. I do think it's probably something that is needed.
I think it needs something out there also.
Okay, so we'll keep that on the old business till we get some more information. Okay, we'll move on to new business, board appointments. I guess we got the wantsome pine office on here again.
To replace Kim Ruth, I make a motion that we appoint Jenny to this board.
Let's take that. Okay, we got a motion to appoint Jenny in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Are these other two on there, Dane, or they?
They're students.
Students. I'll try to get in contact with Renee, see if she can get us a couple from Lee High.
You couldn't ever get away with that.
I'm trying to get one from Tom Focker.
Could, I couldn't get, I talked to different ones.
Yeah, I think Robert and I asked.
I had talked to Michelle and they moved her. So, I'm going to, I'll get over to Renee Clark.
Can you table that one?
Yes.
And on this St. Charles Water Authority, I'd like to table that one also. Okay, next got a resolution in support.
You got the redevelopment and housing authority.
Yeah, I missed one there.
Yeah, and then Mr. Chairman, I got something here I want to bring up too.
Oh, okay, I've got something there. Redevelopment Housing Authority appointment.
I'd like to reappoint Mary Ruth Davidson.
Okay, got a, got a motion to reappoint Mary Ruth Davidson. Got a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Mr. Poe down there. Mike Brendel, worked for the PSA Board. He, or was on the PSA Board as a member. He resigned his post, and he's been hired by the PSA. And I also, I do have an appointee tonight to make that, to fill his position if, if we can do that.
Same problem.
Dane, the one I have is Aaron Stacy. You need his address?
If you've got it.
I do.
Just give it to Jenny.
I do. P.O. Box thirty-seven, Ewing, Virginia, two four two four eight.
Okay, got a motion to appoint Aaron Stacy.
Stacy.
I'll say.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now we'll move on to resolution in support of regional jail funding.
The regional jail authority has requested that all participating localities in the authority adopt resolutions supporting their position in requesting the General Assembly adopt legislation to reinstate funding for state responsible inmates to pre-two thousand ten levels. That's when they really started making reductions on us. That year, the General Assembly reduced funding for these inmates and also increased the sentencing time for inmates to be considered state responsible. And both of these actions have negatively impacted the localities as we have been forced to pick up the difference in funding to maintain our jails. So the, there is a draft resolution there for your consideration, Resolution seventeen dash oh sixteen.
Well, that in turn, if they do so decide to refund that, will that bring money back to us that we've overpaid?
No, no. This would be for future years. In other words, they would be taking action to reinstate those funds unless they reinstated them on an emergency basis. If they reinstated it as, if they adopted the legislation as emergency legislation, it would be effective as soon as the governor signed it mid-session. But typically, it would be dealt with in the budget for next year, for the next fiscal year. So it wouldn't impact what we, what we're paying in now.
But it would save.
But it could potentially save us funding in future years.
So just out of curiosity, why did they wait for so long after the money's been put out?
They've been hammering on it every year. They're just trying to make a, basically get just a little bit more push and a little bit more organized effort. But this has been discussed with the state legislature every year since this was done.
So they just decided to increase the sentences?
They didn't increase their sentences. But prior to that time, an inmate, an inmate who received a sentence of one year and one day was state responsible, which means they could leave them at the local jail, or they could take them on to a state facility. But if they left them in a local jail, they had to pay a portion of their, the established daily per diem. Well, in two thousand ten, they adopted, they made a change to reclassify the sentencing. And so now, an inmate has to receive more than two years in sentencing to be classified as state responsible. So anyone who gets between one and two years now would have previously been state responsible, they're totally locally responsible now. We fund the entire state. And then the other issue is the amount of the daily per diem that they actually pay us. They lowered the per diem. And so they're, they're asking for two different actions. They lowered the per diem for local responsible from eight to four dollars and for state responsible from fourteen to twelve. But they also discontinued the jail contact, contract bed program, which also paid us fourteen dollars for state responsible inmates. So it's, it's probably a long shot to get it. Like I say, it's been discussed with local General Assembly representatives every year, but it's also been discussed at the state level. But they've not moved on it. But there's trying to be more pressure put on them to take responsibility for their inmates and for the cost of them.
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution seventeen dash zero one six.
Second that, uh, okay, we got a motion to accept Resolution seventeen dash zero one six and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next we got the stolen property recovery.
On November, or September twenty-sixth, we were notified that the scag mower and the trailer that were stolen from the transfer station on June sixteenth had both been recovered in Steeple, Tennessee. Mr. Collinsworth picked those items up and returned them to the transfer station. We also notified the insurance company that these items had been recovered, and they notified us that we needed to return the sixty-seven hundred dollar claim funds that we had received from them. So we'll have, we'll have to send them a check. I'd like approval to cut the check to the insurance company for that. Also, we've replaced both those items. We were right in the middle of mowing season when this happened in June. And as you can see, it's been over three months before recovery was made, and we didn't know that they would be recovered. But I have discussed this with Mr. Collinsworth. We would like actually to keep the items. You could put them up for sale in, in a public sale if you wanted to, but we feel like it might be best to keep them. He suggested that the trailer be converted, put some sides on it and convert it for use for litter cleanups, but be able to haul more materials, pull it behind the truck. And also, the mower, we could use the mower in, in multiple ways. One, it could just be left at the airport and used down there to do the mow instead of having to take the equipment down there all the time. Or if you didn't want to leave it down there, he could use a second mower when he has extra personnel to do mowing. I think that's what they're going to do tomorrow. They're going to take both mowers down to the airport. And it speeds up the time. Doesn't sound like a lot of time, but that, that runway is nearly a mile long. We were just talking. It, it takes about an hour just to do one side of the runway. There's two sides to each runway and, or to the runway and two sides to the parallel taxiways. So you start to accumulate quite a bit of time when you're mowing down there. So I just wanted to see what the pleasure of the board was, whether you wanted to go ahead and keep the equipment and maybe repurpose the trailer, or whether you want us to put it up for a public sale and an auction. Or we're probably still hopeful to get an auction for surplus vehicles and things before we get to Thanksgiving, if I can get it put together.
I like the need to keep, Chairman. What about, what kind of cost would be associated repurposing that trailer? You got any ideas?
I'm sorry?
Put sides on the trailer, what is the cost?
Probably a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars at the moment. We've split some A ship aside so far. One day, just a little bit of time, really.
That's something you all would be doing, Owen.
Yeah, we'll take the shot.
Yeah, I think we need to keep it too. I don't think you will get very much out of it at auction anyway. It'd be more beneficial to us than it would be a giveaway. Plus, one got stole, we might have a spare of this now.
Yes, what we thought. We don't have both on the same page.
Yeah, don't keep them together. Make sure they're hidden at different locations.
Keep them in different places, you know. At least keep one of them where insecurity will be. All right, then, Dwyane, I guess we need a motion on that?
If I get a motion on the, approve the refunds of the insurance company.
I'll make a motion. Run the insurance company and keep the equipment.
Okay. Oh, well, okay. Got a motion, got a second. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hook. Next, community policy and management team.
Sure, wire. Mr. Coke, due to the meeting times, Mr. Coke had to resign from the CPMT. And I've been notified by the Attorney for Social Services that the replacement appointment on behalf of the board needs to be in place by November in order for them to be in compliance with federal and state requirements. As you know, they had an audit recently, and that's one of the things. But again, the appointee should either be a board member. It, the code reads that it must be at least one elected official or appointed official or their designee to represent the governing body. So someone needs to be on there in order to be compliant.
And just to be clear on that, what happened, I've been on that for over a year and a half, and they changed the meeting times to nine o'clock instead of three o'clock. And before they even done that, I said, if you change the time to nine, I will have to resign. Because I can't take a full day off work to go to one air meeting.
Cause I can't take a full day off work to go to one air meet.
What do you meet once a month?
They meet once a month. They do it at nine o'clock in the morning right down here at the building across the room.
All right.
That's absurd sounds.
So we're asking for a volunteer?
Who's shaking you, little child?
I don't get up until ten.
What are you gonna do when you retire?
Sleep.
Thursdays. Pretty short.
I'll go ahead.
Okay. Well, it looks like, uh,
It's your Thursday or Tuesday.
Robert volunteered, so.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Robert.
It'll be this Thursday.
Okay, next got the dispatch standard operating procedure.
They're meeting this Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. Should be this Thursday.
Okay. Uh, there's been a committee, uh, Sheriff's Office, County staff, Mr. Coates, and members of fire and rescue organizations have been meeting for several months, working on a, uh, standard operating procedure for dispatch. Uh, they do have the, uh, it's not, it's, it's in final form. This is not draft. They've been through this multiple times.
A few.
Yeah, but it's being, uh, presented to you for formal adoption tonight. I'm sure all of you have read everything in there, uh, well, under construction. Don't ask me questions. Ask Mr. Coates.
Go ahead. I've looked at enough. I should be able to answer any, you know?
I think there's a lot of work going into this.
And it was, it was, uh, by no means, not taking credit for it, we actually, there's probably seven or eight different agencies that played parts in it and put in suggestions, and we had the subcommittees and then one big committee that basically done the approval and put it back together. And we're actually tearing down the, uh, emergency procedures and hopefully gonna be doing a tabletop here shortly. We got a group with, uh, basically through FEMA, based out of Marion, who's gonna be coming down and help us try to get better at their skills and get people working together, coordinating together. This was just a good first step. But it, it was a, it was a joint effort. And a lot of people put a lot of time in.
Well, I know you don't want to take credit, Dave, but, uh, I appreciate that. I know you put a lot, a lot of hard work into it. We thank you for that. All right, I guess that means we need a motion to the document.
I will make that motion.
I'll second. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right there. Any reports or recommendations from our county attorney?
No, sir.
I'm starting there. Dane's looking down. Any, uh, reports and recommendations of the county administrator?
Of course. Uh, not much tonight, but I have, uh, provided a memo that's been distributed to you there regarding the, uh, our IBM mainframe computer. Uh, it, uh, this should've been on the agenda, but we failed to get it in there. We, uh, we had this item, this is a budgeted upgrade on our mainframe system. Uh, as of March of two thousand eighteen, our main computer operating system will reach end of life, which means IBM will no longer support it for maintenance work. Uh, so we need, we need this, uh, equipment upgrade. Uh, we have thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted for the total upgrade. The equipment, uh, is, is going to be at a cost of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars. That also includes five years of warranty coverage. Uh, we, we would've, we, we couldn't wait till March to do this, but we could've done this a little bit later. But our software company, Brighton Associates, has, uh, notified us that they need to get some updates installed into the system, and this platform will not accept those updates. So we need to do the upgrade before they can do their updates, and they need to get them in before spring. So it's the reason I'm hand carrying it in tonight. Uh, the only other cost right now that we know that we'll need on this is the migration services, or if the man that comes in, it actually migrates the information from the old system to the new system to get everything up and running. Uh, we think the thirty-five thousand will be close on, on covering all this cost. Actually, the, uh, cost here, uh, for the equipment is just about two thousand dollars less than the budgeted, uh, the quote we had for budget purposes. They had it at like thirty-one thousand. So it's, it's a little bit cheaper than what we'd initially thought the equipment would be. So I would request that the board approve this tonight.
All right, looking for a motion. So moving. I got second. I'll second. All right, any discussion?
The other one question, this pay thing that they got on here, is this interest free?
Uh, no, we, and we budgeted for the full amount.
So we just gonna pay it flat out?
Yeah, I, I see no point to pay a lease fee and pay interest for it already.
Well, that's the way I was gonna agree to.
We budgeted for it.
That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, glad you approved it.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, also, I'll make you aware, um, I'm, I was gonna say I'm working on, but I'm trying to work on several bids. Uh, so you're gonna, you'll, you'll be seeing several bids coming back in in the next two to three months on several different items. Some of the, some, uh, grant funds that we have down in nine-one-one, uh, sheriff's vehicles, and this year, I'll make you aware, before I put that bid out, the thing, what we had looked at this year is replacing, uh, vehicles like the investigators are driving. Uh, and so we will be looking for four-wheel drive vehicles to replace them. They will not be police interceptor units, but they, they'll just be standard four-wheel drive units. But, uh, that'll replace some of the old aging vehicles that they're driving. Uh, and they'll also make more four-wheel and all-wheel drive vehicles that would be available during snowstorms for road officers to be able to use. So that bid will be going out. Uh, another bid, uh, will be on a, a truck, new truck at the transfer station. Uh, we've already, which the old truck that was stolen was on its last legs anyway. I think that's probably why they abandoned it and left it to where we could find it. So, uh, it's, it's not usable, but the one they've been using temporarily has just about gone down on them, so they're on their secondary, second temporary replacement over there. So we've got that one to get bid out. Uh, also, last week, Thursday?
Yeah.
Thursday, uh, litter control officer was on his way to a meeting in Abingdon, I believe it was, uh, over around Spears Ferry in that general area. He was, uh, he had to slow down near stop for some turning vehicles there. Uh, he was like the third vehicle in line, and a vehicle behind him, uh, didn't see him stopping in time, swerved to one side, clipped him with the front end of their vehicle, and then hit him with the back end, flipped the truck over. Uh, we don't have the estimate yet. The, our insurance company notified us today that it will be the other driver's carrier that'll be handling it. We'll be nationwide insurance. Uh, we expect it to be a total loss. The bed was, uh, damaged on both sides. Tailgate was torn out. Three of the four glasses. The, the back glass, the windshield are broken. One of the, uh, door glasses is broken. The roof is caved in partially on one side, and both front fenders and, uh, front end are damaged. So it's gonna be a total loss. It's like a two-thousand-four vinod truck. So probably, as soon as we, I, I'm gonna go ahead and prepare a bid on that. We'll try to get that out very quickly. Uh, we do have a, a new vehicle budgeted there anyway, so that's, uh, the, what little insurance proceeds. We'll get on that. We'll just help a little bit. Uh, he had requested a quad cab, uh, mid-size pickup, uh, so that when they go out for litter pickups and stuff, they can haul more people in that vehicle. I had not, uh, planned specifically to get a four-wheel drive vehicle unless you feel like we need to do that. The vehicle that was totaled was a two-wheel drive vehicle. So if it's, if there's no objection, I would probably spec a two-wheel drive vehicle for that.
What do you think? I mean, in, in the winter, you think it might be beneficial to, I mean, does he get out?
It's, it's not gonna be- When you can't see any litter.
You're not gonna be picking up litter when it's stolen, right?
Well, he says he's afraid snakes in the summertime, so I figured he'd pick it up in the winter.
Well, they get it fall and spring a lot. But day of winter, the temperatures and the weather's usually not, you know, if you get some warm days, you'll go out, but.
Did he get nervous?
No, no. He, he was fine. We did, uh, push him to go on to the ER just to get checked out and make sure, and he did, so.
Did, what's he, has he got something to drive now?
Right now, he'll just use county vehicles, uh, as they're available when he needs to do something.
I think I'll get him one, so he can get back to work.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll have to make sure that it's gonna be a total, but I, I'm positive that it will be, just to get that official word. Uh, one other thing, and I just got this email, um, this afternoon. Uh, you remember, you all assisted with funding for, uh, the United Way with this IGNAP program for, uh, young, young kids, uh, to be able to explore what job possibilities are available in the area. And one of the components of the IGNAP program, and when I first heard the school system was sending teachers to tour businesses, I thought, oh, what in the world is going on? But when I heard the presentation at the breakfast, at the, at the United Way breakfast, uh, a few weeks ago, it clicked and it made sense. Because basically what it does, it gets teachers, many of whom, not all, but many of whom have never held any other job but teaching. Their, their total work experience is classroom. And so they don't understand the application of job skills into other types of work out, out in the work environment. So that's the purpose of this, and that's what United Way is actually sponsoring this, that they're taking teachers on tour of business places so that they can make the connection between what they're teaching in the classroom and how that helps the students apply that in the future years. Uh, they're doing those tours again, uh, the, the tour for the Lee Norton, Skok and Wise area will be on November first. I got this, uh, email, uh, saying that if board members want to join and go on the tour, you're welcome to do that. Uh, you would need to meet them at Mountain Empire Community College at eight o'clock on Wednesday, November the first. They will be touring Wise County Government Offices, Norton Community Hospital, and Pepsi Cola, cola bottling that day. Uh, they'll, I think the schedule was to have you back to the college around three o'clock in the afternoon, so it'd be pretty much a full day. If you want to participate, just let me know and I can let them know. But that will be on November the first. And that's all I have.
Thank goodness. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Okay, uh, anything else? Well, I guess first and nothing else, this meeting will be adjourned.
Need motion.
I'll make a motion.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?